At this time, I'd like to call our Monday, October 14th, 2024 Greensville County School Board meeting to order. Um, Clark, can you call the roll?
Board Chair Ruston Jesse.
Here.
Madam Vice Chair Janet Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Ronnie O'Pearson.
Here.
Ms. Bessie Reed-Moore.
Here.
A call has been established.
Thank you. Uh, we'd like to welcome everybody this evening, um, to our school board meeting. And the first item on our agenda is moving into closed session. Um, seeking a motion to go into closed session to conduct student hearings for students 2024 dash M-12 and 2024 dash M-13 as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one A two of the Code of Virginia, as well as go over, um, any personnel matters to discuss, consider, or interview prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board pertaining to Virginia Code two dash two, two point two dash three seven one one A one.
Make a motion and move on to the closed session.
Second motion.
It's been moved and properly second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor making none by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? As have it, we now go into closed session.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go back into our open session. Click if you can certify.
Board Chair Ruston Jesse.
Yes.
Vice Chair Janet Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Ronald Pearson.
Yes.
Ms. Bessie Reedmore.
Yes.
All right, moving on, at this time, we'd like you guys to join us in our invocation led by Ms. Roberts.
That's great. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and this time to come together. We ask you to direct us and lead us as we try to provide the best educational services for our students. Look on them and guide them, give them the mind to want to do better and to be better. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next up is Item D, our mission and vision. At GCPS, our mission is together with families in the community, we are committed to providing a safe, rigorous, student-centered environment that empowers learners. Our vision is cultivating excellence, transforming lives, and impacting futures. Right? Next, I'm seeking a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Still moving. Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor making none by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? As have it. Item B is the approval of our minutes. Again, seeking a motion.
A move that we approved the minutes from the previous month's meeting.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor making none by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Next up is the approval of our warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor making none by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, next up is Section 5 Superintendent's Report and Information Items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me move right into the superintendent's report, and the first one is our corrective action plan. Greensville County Public Schools is under memorandum of understanding with the Virginia Department of Education as we move toward continuous process progress of our academic and student success here in Greensville County Public Schools. And each month, we give an recap and review of the things that we have done to move forward with academics and student success in the four other categories that we are under the memorandum of understanding with. Under academic and student success, where it says all students will be engaged in rigorous, innovative, and meaningful activities to be better prepared when they enter college and or the workplace. Under academic and student success is always a priority of the Board of Education, a work session was held, and that was held on September the 24th. The Board of Education and superintendents are participating in master board training, where we cover an avenue of components where it says to become a better team, to be a better governance team for Greensville County Public Schools. Our next session will be on October the 31st, which is Halloween, where the Board will complete master board training. We met with executive principals, met with the state superintendent, Region 8 VIVAS training is coming forth where the division superintendents and division directors of testing are undergoing the components to see where we will land in the changing model under the Virginia Department of Education as they are changing the standards as it relates to testing. We met with Dr. Hurt, and we also held a conference with Catapult, where we partner with our writing here at Greensville County High School and also at Wyatt Middle School. Also, we move forward, we did some co-teaching planning. Want to thank Wyatt for inviting us over for that meeting. Had a very thorough meeting. We also saw members from T-TAC engaged, and we embraced the thief dance as it relates to academic success. Want to thank Dr. Stiff for putting that together along with Dr. Scott. We also met with the superintendent's national group final site, and we're moving forward with our discussion on cosmetology for Greensville County High School. Also meetings with Southside Virginia College on continuous lab school discussion, SOL discussions with CIP, met with Thrive the Five, which concentrates on birth through five-year-olds, and they are care in Greensville County and Emporia City. The board chair and superintendent also participated in fiscal governance training, and we will have another session this Wednesday on October the 16th, where we will take a team of five to the VSBA headquarters in Charlottesville, Virginia. Also, we had unit of justice training, and we are proud to say that we see Ms. Dunn is in the audience. Ms. Dunn wrote a grant, and we are moving forward with our unit of justice training, where you see the dynamic team on the board there. Meeting started September the 3rd, and we've just completed our first quarter of training. Unit of justice is another method and an alternative to disciplinary actions that are given at a high school, and we are proud to say that the initiative is going well, and Ms. Dunn serves as our project manager, unit of justice training in Greensville County High School. Also senior executive leadership meetings, and also we are meeting with the directors, coordinators, and supervisors where we have working on the work sessions in Greensville County Public Schools. Under leadership and governance, we did more than have some Z's up there. Hold on. We'll move forward to operations and support student services for our priority, and where we establish practices and controls to create environments that promote student and staff success. When you're looking forward, what have we done? Thus far, we purchased three school buses out of the final funding from our S-3 money that goes, that went away on September the 30th. We are looking at completion of the construction of the new walkway at Greensville Elementary School. School, and we are proud to say that all elevators on all three campuses have been repaired successfully so that everyone is safe in the elevator. Under our human resource leadership, where we were completing and going through frontline training on all campuses, a day was spent on each campus to introduce all staff members to frontline. Also the training with other, had other training with school divisions in Fredericksburg, Virginia, where the team went to Fredericksburg and actually participated in the training. The planning meetings continue for frontline integration for the human resources and the finance side. We'll continue to work on updating our policies, and the project team for frontline will continuously work until full implementation of frontline. Also, under community relations, we attended the board of supervisors meeting that was held on October the 8th, where we met with the Thrive the Five personnel. Board of supervisor member Brown was there, and board supervisor Ms. Astrop along with county administrator Dr. Woolridge. We had the release of GCPS Now. First edition came out. We're happy to say that Ms. India Johnson was the first person to participate in our GCPS Now. And our second round, in our second week, proud to see Mr. Zdanziewicz in the audience. Mrs. Zdanziewicz gave a brief, he's on the stage now, doing our GCPS Now as we continue to look to improve communications in Greensville County Public Schools. And also, as always, our school events are posted on social media, and we're constantly improving and updating our website and all social media platforms. Mr. Chairman and to the board, that concludes my corrective action plan update for the month of October 20, for the month of October in the year 2024.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, next up is Item B under this category, the superintendent's highlights.
Under superintendent's highlights, I just mentioned one. Very proud to say that the work of Mr. German along with the technology team, Mr. Redman leads our technology team, moving forward with communication to give us our production of GCPS Now. We're moving forward with Soup Scoop. Soup Scoop is where I go to each campus monthly to have a conversation with faculty and staff that may have questions. to have a conversation with faculty and staff that may have questions, and that is going to be on the third, on the second, third, and fourth Thursday of every month. And we're happy to be going out to the schools, hearing the voice of all of our faculty and staff that may have questions that arise, and they would like an answer to. And want to highlight this and put a special spotlight on Greensville County High School. We are very proud to announce that Greensville County High School has been fully accredited as proven by the school quality profile on the Virginia Department of Education website. And this has been a long time coming, so I say a special thank you to every faculty and staff member, not only here at Greensville County High School where we see what can be achieved, but also at Greensville Elementary School, and also at Wyatt Middle School, where we are just one subject away, and that's in science. When you look at from whence we have come to this day, and for this entire division to take chronic absenteeism from a Level 3 to a Level 1 in one academic year is unheard of. Let me say that again, totally unheard of. And I will give you just one prime example of that. At Greensville Elementary School and at Wyatt Middle School and here at Greensville County High School, the examples were that we were 35% and higher in chronic absenteeism. But in one academic year, one academic year, all chronic absenteeism in Greensville County Public Schools has been reduced to a Level 1, which means that's the best level that you can have. And you do not achieve that unless someone is knocking on doors, checking with parents, making those connective contacts, and also want to extend the component to communities and schools, our partner. Ms. Boone here has been at the high school for one calendar year. If you walk out in the halls, you will see the attendance wall of fame, and the attendance wall of fame recognizes all those students that come to school every single day. And we have monthly participation on every campus where we recognize those students. So hats off to all the great work that is going on in Greensville County Public Schools as we continue our quest for excellence, as it says in our logo, committed to excellence. Greensville County High School, job well done. Greensville Elementary School, job well done. Wyatt Middle School, job well done, and we won't stop, can't stop, will not stop till we see fully accredited on all of our schools.
Anything you guys would like to add in regards to Superintendent's Highlights?
We're really proud of how far we have come, and we're excited about where we're going to go.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, moving on to Item C, Special Recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call Ms. Riddick forward, our Chief Human Resource Office, as we go over the October highlights. And when you look at the October highlights and recognition, it's a lot of them, but we're going to get through it.
Yes, we are. Chairman Jesse, Madam Vice Chair Roberts, board members, Dr. Edwards, colleagues, and guests, good evening. As Dr. Edwards said, October is full of awareness, but we're going to get through them as quick as possible. First up, Greensville County Public Schools recognizes Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Tonight, we wear pink in support of those who are fighting this disease in honor of the survivors and in memory of those who lost their fight. So thank you guys for wearing pink. Domestic Violence Month, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The third Thursday of October has now become nationally recognized as Purple Thursday, where people nationwide are encouraged to wear purple to increase awareness for domestic violence. Join us in wearing purple on Thursday, October 17th.
Ms. Riddick, I do want to interject and intervene. There was a domestic violence walk here, held here in Emporia, and it went very well. We're very thankful to be invited to that. So thank you to the team for inviting us to the domestic violence walk, Ms. Dunn.
Bullying Prevention Month is celebrated in October also. It's a time to promote kindness, acceptance, and inclusion, and to prevent bullying in schools, communities, and online. National Cyber Security Awareness Month is an international initiative that educates everyone about online safety and empowers the theme of Cyber Security Awareness Month, and secure our world is the theme this year. Here to remind us that there are simple ways to protect yourself, your family, and your organizations from online threats. So thank you to our technology team for keeping us safe online. National School Lunch Week, get ready to set the sail for adventure. From October 14th to 18th, our cafeterias will celebrate National School Lunch Week with the theme, School Lunch Pirates, Find Your Treasure. Students will enjoy fun nutritious meals, participate in Lucky Tray Day, taste tests, and pirate-themed activities. Don't miss out on the chance to explore how school lunches fuel student success and discover the treasure of healthy eating. Ms. Garner invites all of us to celebrate with them at any school and find the treasure in every tray. National School Bus Safety Week, held during the third full week of October each year, focuses on the importance of school bus safety. National School Bus Safety Week for October 2024, it's October 21st to 25th. The theme this year is keeping students safe on their ride. Red Ribbon Week takes place each year, October 23rd to October 31st, and inspires kids to be brave. This year's theme is Life is a Movie, Film Drug Free. Unity Day is October 16th, Wear and Share Orange to send a visible message of building community through kindness, acceptance, and inclusion to prevent bullying. National Bosses Day is October 16th. Recognizes the hard-working tasks of boss overseeing the workplaces. Employees across the United States show appreciation and thankfulness to their bosses. I think that was it for that one. As indicated in our strategic plan, go to high-quality, committed, and diverse workforce. Objective 2.1, Strategy 2, Greensville County Public Schools takes pride in creating opportunities to recognize and celebrate staff. Tonight, we want to recognize our principals. Greensville County Public Schools recognizes October as National Principals Month. We would like to thank each principal for their hard work and dedication to the students and staff they serve. Please come forward as your name is called. Tekeisha High Jones, Greensville Elementary.
Dr. Scott.
This certificate is proudly presented to Tekeisha High Jones for outstanding leadership, dedication, and commitment to excellence in education. Your unwavering guidance and tireless efforts have made a lasting impact on the lives of students, staff, and the entire school community. With sincere appreciation, we honor you during National Principals Month for your exceptional service and contribution to Greensville Elementary. Signed, Ruston Jesse, School Board Chair, Superintendent Dr. Kelvin Edwards. Wyatt Middle School, Ms. Mary Person. Greensville County High School, Dr. Shante Posey James. And Dr. Dana Hall, the Refocus Center. Awesome. Thank you all so much. National Custodians Day was celebrated October 2nd. We would like to thank SSC and their staff for keeping our schools and offices clean. I didn't see any of them here tonight. Yeah, so, anyway, Ms. Bess and her crew works really hard, and we thank them for the work that they do. Next up, National Instructional Coaches Day was celebrated on October 6th, 2024. Instructional coaches work tirelessly to foster collaboration and positive learning experiences that feel supportive, not evaluative. We would like to thank our instructional coaches for the work that they do for those they serve. Please come forward when your name is called. For the elementary coaches, Terry Braddy. Ms. Jesse, give them all back to me. Right here. They're mixed up with the other coaches. There we go. Thank you. Carrie Ferguson. And Jessica Jarrett. Our secondary coaches. Lisa Francis. Monica Kinsey. And Erica Smith. And last, but certainly not least, National Coaches Day was celebrated on October 6th also. So we want to thank all of our athletic coaches for what they do for our athletic programs, students, athletes, parents, and community, seen and unseen. Please come forward as your name is called. Wyatt Middle School, Troy Anderson. Mr. Anderson also coaches at Greensville County High School. Teresa Bullock. And Simone Woodley. I want to ask for help. I think that was too much, such thing is too much help. I don't know your name, Ms. Woodley. There you go, Ms. Woodley. Thank you. Oh my, do the shirt. The hair dance right here, Ms. Woodley. Y'all got these things in order. It's Ms. Nimbar here. For Greensville County High School, Lloyd Carter. Andre Ellis. Mercedes Mallory. Sharon Mannan Randolph. Esther Small. Mario Walton. Darian Brown. And Jasmine Williams. It's not, this is all who's in attendance. We have one more thing, and then I'll be done. See y'all know they ready for this. Wyatt Middle School took them all home in the last, last year, and have had them, so we're going to see where we are. So for the Cleanest School Award, it goes to Wyatt Middle School. So September was Attendance Awareness Month, so we're going to see how aware everyone was. Highest staff attendance with 94.3% goes to Greensville County High School. Highest student attendance with 95% Wyatt Middle School. Good job. Good job. Two out of three, that's great. You're going to get it, I know. I know you will. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Riddick and Dr. Edwards. Next up is Item D, our Communities and Schools Update.
Mr. Sherman, I do want to just give one, one update. We're moving forward and I mentioned units of just, unit of justice. And so on October the 28th or the 29th, 29th, we are going to have a special visitor from Uganda, from Uganda where units of justice schools are being built. And so as part of the collaboration with our project manager, Ms. Dunn, we've talked to the principals at Hopewell High School and Mr. Katina is coming to Greensville County Public Schools on October the 29th to visit with Dr. Posey James and staff to talk about the positive impacts of unit of justice and how it impacts schools. And we thank you, Ms. Dunn, for setting that up for us and we're looking forward to having that special visitor from another country. Thank you so much. We will get together on the time and we will put that, once the visit is confirmed, for the timeframe. The time is 10 a.m. on the 29th, October the 29th. Looking forward to that visitation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board Chair, Mr. Jesse, Board Vice Chair, Mrs. Roberts, Board members, Mrs. Reed Moore, Mr. Pearson, Superintendent Dr. Edwards. Good evening to everyone in attendance, whether in person or online. My name is Nicole Jania Boone, Student Support Coordinator for Communities and Schools of Virginia, and I will be presenting updates on tonight. I have several slides, but I will move as swiftly as possible. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to share these updates with you this evening. First off, the Communities and Schools of Virginia Network expanded. Well, actually, the expansion began last school year in the South Side region of Virginia. That's number seven on the map with two CIS Student Support Coordinators, one right here in Greensville County, myself, and one in Washington County, Danville, Virginia. This school year, the expansion continues here in Greensville County with two additional coordinators who've joined the team, Mrs. Kiana Benjamin Judkins, and she is located at Greensville Elementary School. Mrs. Judkins is supporting the school in the area of attendance. Ms. Dwayneette Young is located at Wyatt Middle School, and she is supporting the school in the area of behavior. Here at Greensville County High School, I am still supporting the school in the area of attendance. Our CIS of Virginia South Side team, Greensville County District leaders are Mr. Willie Gillis Jr., our Embedded Programs Director, and Mr. Lathaniel Kurtz, our Program Director. So the CIS way is based on our founder's perspective, Dr. Bill Milliken. He began CIS with the belief that programs do not change kids, but relationships do. CIS places site coordinators in schools to surround students with supports, help develop their social, emotional, as well as academic competencies, improve their attendance, behavior, and coursework performance, help students get promoted to the next grade level, keep them on the path towards graduation, and promote their college and career readiness. The next slides that you'll see will include a recap and summary of CISVA provided supports here at Greensville County High School during the 2023-2024 school year. Our attendance was our focus and we successfully, successfully implemented the Attendance Wall of Fame as Dr. Edwards spoke about earlier, and we held monthly attendance recognitions and celebrations, including gift card drawings. At the end of the school year, we sponsored the Food Truck Rodeo for students who earned perfect attendance throughout the school year. Three food trucks were on site that afternoon with the DJ spinning some of the best tunes for the students. For our CIS enrolled students, 39 of 40 with an attendance goal last school year met their goal. Data was collected and reviewed on a daily and weekly basis of students' attendance in school as well as in the classroom. CISVA enrolled students were taken on three field trips last school year. The first trip was to the Southern Virginia Higher Education Center, where they had the opportunity to tour the following departments, the IT Academy, HVAC, Certified Nurse and Education Center, IC Welding, IC Automation and Robotics, and Industrial Maintenance. Our students also were able to travel to the MEAC, which is the Mid Eastern Athletic Conference College Fair and Opening Day Basketball Games. I would like to say Mr. Anderson was there with us also, and I want to say thank you for your support on the school support team last school year. Students had the opportunity to meet with MEAC member college enrollment representatives from the following colleges, Coppin State University, Delaware State University, Howard University, Maryland Eastern Shore, Morgan State University, Norfolk State University, North Carolina Central University, and South Carolina State University. Two of our varsity boys basketball team members were actually selected to participate in the halftime basketball challenge, as you can see there on the right side, and they really enjoyed that opportunity. Last but not least, the CISVA sponsored a trip to the NBA Washington Wizards Sports Career Day, an NBA game versus the Houston Rockets. Students had the opportunity to learn about the various careers and sports other than being a professional athlete. They participated in breakout sessions, heard from a panel of speakers, and attended a college fair as well. Slides 11 and 12 highlight our CISVA-sponsored Summer Academy, which was held in the month of July. At the Washington Park Community Center, students engaged in college and career-focused activities, participated in workshops led by Dr. Mark James from the Virginia Union University. He's the Dean of Students, so students were able to actually connect with him, give them their names and information, their interests, as well as Mrs. Latonya Oakley, our CEO of the Unwrapping the Gift and He Matters Foundation out of Granville, North Carolina. Students also toured two college campuses, Virginia Commonwealth University, as well as Virginia Union University over the summer. So CISVA has a partner here in Greensville County Public Schools District, has been a rewarding opportunity for students. The collaboration and focus on attendance, among other things, last school year contributed to the full accreditation goal being achieved. But this year is in progress. Our School Needs Assessment has been completed, our School Support Plan has been completed. Currently, we have four to nine students enrolled. Also, individualized student needs assessments are in progress, as well as our student support plans, our Tier One Supports, Tier Two Targeted Supports, and our Tier Three One-on-One Supports are also in progress. For the month of September was Suicide Prevention Month, and we were fully engaged with those efforts to bring about positive messages to our students, spreading positive messages, letting them know that they are welcome, letting them know that they belong, letting them know that we care and they are supported. Also, Mrs. India Johnson, our Fashion Design Teacher, she really engaged students in her classroom by encouraging them to create, design their own T-shirts with positive messages. And so we had those posted up during the month of September. We are continuing to do Tier Two activities. I want to thank school support team members, Ms. Brenda Stevenson and Dr. Denise Avent for their support as well, starting off this school year with our students. I do have announcements and then I am wrapping up, but that is my contact information. I forgot to add these to the slides. I will share these if y'all compare.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to invite you all out to our high school for these upcoming events. Drive Smart Virginia Organization will be here on tomorrow, beginning at 10:45 a.m. CISVA enrolled students and driver's education students will participate in the Distracted Impaired Driving Simulator, as well as the Impaired Pedal Car Obstacle Course. The purpose for this is to educate, bring awareness, and promote safe driving. Healing Peacemaking Drumming Circles Workshop with Dr. Ram Boggatt, that will take place on Friday, October the 25th, beginning at 9:30 a.m. Dr. Ram Boggatt is a longtime educator, 35 years, and an international conflict resolution trainer specializing in arts integration and certified in restorative justice. He is a master teacher of culturally responsive peacemaking circles, trauma awareness, and resilience. He established the Drums No Guns Foundation in 2017 to expand his work with youth and families traumatized from gun violence by combining trauma healing, restorative practices, mindfulness, and artfulness. The purpose of this session is to promote physical, mental, and emotional wellness and healing here at our school. On Wednesday, October the 30th, CISVA Breast Cancer Awareness Tier Two for CISVA enrolled students will take place. Students will participate in a community service learning project and hear testimonials from two guest speakers. The purpose is to educate, bring awareness, and promote physical, mental, and emotional wellness. The CISVA Network Summit and All In for Kids Awards, Innovating with Intention, Professional Development, and Training will take place October the 21st through the 23rd at the Weston Richmond. I will be on, on site there on those dates. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next is Item E, an instructional update.
I'd like to call Mrs. Harrison to the podium, please, to give us our instructional update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It started out kind of short, and then I forgot the good good, so I had to go back. So I wanted to make sure that you all have the extra good good.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairperson Jesse, Vice Chair, Ms. Roberts, Members of the Board, Dr. Edwards. I stand before you to give an update on instruction, teaching, and learning for October 2024. Oh, clicker. You waiting on me to click? Got it? Okay, starting by reminding everyone of The Educator's Edge. The Educator's Edge is published weekly and sent out to staff throughout the division that highlights the exciting news in the world of teaching and learning, provides announcements from the Virginia Department of Education, includes important updates, shares professional learning opportunities and resources, gives teaching and learning shout-outs weekly. And again, that is released on Wednesdays, and we are currently in Volume Nine, and I don't know how to make that activate from here. Nope. But Volume Nine, if you, when you open up Volume Nine of The Educator's Edge, the first thing that pops up is Greensville County High School, fully accredited, yes, go Eagles, very excited about that, cannot celebrate that enough. Hot off the press from this morning, and I think I might be missing a slide. The Teaching and Learning Department discussed what changes could be made to our data forms that we use to analyze data throughout the school year so that we can keep the momentum and focus on specific students and strands and move beyond the surface data so that we continue to work towards getting all schools fully accredited. So the adjustments that were made, we have sections that allow you to identify, this is a sample of what biology would look like, to identify the standard and students by name. And then the second part of that would be to identify the subgroups, because if you know from our years talking about data, when you're looking at subgroups, you could make it academically for all students and then fall short in yellow or red because of a certain subgroup. So it's important that we identify students by name as well as by subgroup. So the new data form that was sent out will allow you to say Lamika didn't do well on SOL II, and these are the strategies specifically that I'm going to do with Lamika and any other student in that group that did not do well, so that it's not a one-size-fits-all type of remediation. Oh, before I move to real-world experiences, I also wanted to mention that on October the 29th, we will have members of the Teaching and Learning Team to attend the School Leaders' Collaboration Session, in which the focus is going to be centered on principles of improvement in science. And that will be presented from Max Yakovsky from Radford University, and that is in collaboration with us being a member of the Comprehensive Instruction Program with Dr. Hurt. All right, teaching and learning, good good. Real-world experiences. So I wanted to highlight criminal justice. Criminal justice had a mock crime scene activity. The students applied classroom knowledge to a real-world scenario. They collected, labeled, and packaged evidence. They created a detailed sketch of the crime scene, captured pictures, completed proper documentation. Students were challenged with paying close attention to detail, critically thinking, and accurately documenting evidence. All these skills are necessary in careers in criminal justice and forensic science, and this is our teacher. The fabulous Mr. Brown. All right?
Now, Mr. Brown, you know you're never shy on words, huh? I mean, to create a crime scene in our first year of criminal justice, I mean, that's phenomenal.
Thank you, sir.
Officer Brown, phenomenal. Exposing our students to real-world experience.
Yes. It was a realistic crime scene. I actually wrote a statement.
So you were just being bashful.
First of all, good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Superintendent, Madam Secretary. I want to thank y'all for the opportunity to come before me and speak and just give you a brief overview of what we did. And I would like to share with you the success of our recent mock crime scene activity where students was tasked with collecting various types of evidence. The hands-on experience gave students the opportunity to apply their classroom knowledge in real-world scenarios. The mock crime scene included different types of evidence, and students had to carefully label evidence bags and package them and package items based on the materials that was made of. The criminal justice forensic science, every piece of evidence go in a different type of bag depending on the material. So in the classroom side, they learned what evidence go in which package. And so when they went to the mock crime scene, they literally determined itself what evidence went in which package. They done a real good job of that. In addition to collecting evidence, packaging evidence, students were required to create a detail, a detailed sketch of the crime scene, take notes for proper documentation, and capture photographs of the scene, both scale and without scale. This experience challenged students to pay close attention to detail and essential skills in the criminal justice and forensic science. Overall, the activity helped students gain a deeper understanding of crime scene investigation techniques, critical thinking, and importance, importance accuracy in documentation of evidence. Exercises like these are enviable and prepare students for careers in criminal justice and forensic science. Thank you.
I don't know if you heard Dr. Edwards when he said that this is our first year for criminal justice?
Yes, yes.
Oh, see, that's, that's what I was looking for earlier. Okay. Mock interviews, my. Practical preparation for Chick-fil-A hiring event.
All right.
So we had 69 students participate in a mock interview. So we held them this past Friday. We utilized the group format to help build their confidence and reduce anxiety. We pulled questions from Forbes 10 Common Job Questions for 2024, provided real-time feedback and interview strategies. The special thank you to the interviewers, Dr. Farkason, Mrs. Riddick, Mrs. Phelps, Ms. Stevenson, and Mr. Ellis with those tips along the way. And the hiring event is actually tomorrow, so our students are ready. So I cannot wait for them to open, and you all go there, and they help you, and they say, "My pleasure." It is going to be fantastic.
Yes, it is. I just want to add also, go back to that slide, Mrs. Harrison. When you look at, one of the things that we reach out to businesses in Greensville and Emporia, there's something called soft skills. Soft skills that many feel that our students are graduating with a lack thereof. And when you sit there and say, "What are we doing about it?", we're giving these students the opportunity to have these real-world experience to prepare them. You know, it starts with a handshake. When you say a handshake, what does that mean? Are you looking the person in the eye? Are you giving them the proper greeting? And it goes on. Are you saying the proper words when you are interviewing? And that's what this is all about. And thank you for the vision, Mrs. Harrison, as you promote our career technical education. And they're paying what an hour, Mrs. Harrison, when you say Chick-fil-A?
The minimum would be $13.
The minimum is $13 an hour.
Okay. So let me just finish telling you that some of you probably cannot see, not sure what happened, but it's okay. I wanted to talk about our Success 101 program. I mentioned that last month, and which is our Trent. Thank you. Thank you for that, which is our transition course for our freshman academy. And in talking with the students, it's through our partnership with Hampton City Public Schools that help us develop a, this curriculum for, to provide career exploration for students transitioning in. And in talking with them, I wanted to know, talk to me about the impact. What has this course helped you with transitioning? And they all said, "Yes, this course has helped me." But they also really talked about building confidence because they were afraid to come to high school. So the confidence to be able to communicate with each other, to stand in front of the class. One student said, "I really now know what I want to do." And so that was exciting to talk to them about all the different things that they've done. And I would say, more importantly, they talked a lot about writing, because in the class, they have to do journals every day. When they have to go to My Next Move, it's a website that they can put in those careers that they selected and get all the type of information, what kind of schooling is required, what's to pay. And they are in the process now of writing a five-paragraph paper on the job that they have chosen. And so every night, they have a different writing assignment, and they're building on that. And so we're preparing them for right now, ninth grade, 10th grade, and while ninth grade, their second semester, they're going to World History Month. And so the writing that's taking place now, and also throughout their creative writing class, is preparing them for the PBA that they have to write when they get into history. So I was excited to be able to look through their portfolios and see just the gains that they've made from August to now in writing, so we're excited about that. And this is just a picture of their Success 101 board, and they had to write what they want to become and a motivational statement or quote that keeps them going throughout the process. All right. Avid, we've already been touring, guys. So middle school and EL attended Brightpoint Community College, and these are some pictures from that. And oh, wait a minute. If you can see, there's a picture of young ladies in the middle, and they are super excited about being in the electrical class at Brightpoint. So they were turning all the knobs. They went to the back, and the instructors were showing them how to turn off the breaker. And they was like, "I can't do it." One said, "Hold on, my fingernail is too long." But they wanted to see all the lights and the bells and the whistles, and it was exciting because for a female, that's a non-traditional field.
Right.
And so to see that they have an interest in that and that we have an electrical program now, I'm just excited. And our Avid Nine attended the University of Richmond. I had the opportunity to accompany them on that trip. If you've never seen the University of Richmond, it is absolutely beautiful.
It really is.
Our Avid Ten attended Chauan University. They had a rain day, so that was the only group picture I was able to get that day. And our Avid Eleven attended Longwood University, so that's a group picture and a picture of them in one of the information sessions. And our community outreach so far, Dr. Edwards mentioned that earlier, it is, it was the Domestic Awareness Walk that was sponsored by Family Violence Sexual Assault Unit and Child Advocacy Center. All right. And we also took students who are interested in the business in the sports industry to the Commander Stadium, and they had the opportunity to receive a tour and also talk to professionals in the area of entertainment and marketing, ticketing, as it relates to careers in the sports industry. So that's a picture of them in the, what is it called? The interview room, right, Mr. Ellis? In the interview room and also in the locker room, which they enjoy being able to go into the identical space, to the point that they were looking it up on their phone saying, "Oh, this really is the real space. This is what it looks like." So they had an opportunity to take pictures and really had a great time. And this is my last slide, Ms. Person.
Ooh, look at that. Look at that greenhouse.
Because not only are we growing our students, we are about to embark on a school-based enterprise from Wyatt Middle School with the beauty of this greenhouse. And so look out for some poinsettias by Christmas pass. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Harrison.
Any questions?
No. As part of the instructional update, I'd like to bring Dr. Scott forward, and he was going to give us an update as we look toward transformation and as we look to our special education. Dr. Scott.
Good evening, Board Chair Jesse, Vice Chair Roberts, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Edwards. I'll be very brief with you all this evening. Handle With Care. Handle With Care's required workshop that teaches staff, that teaches staff to develop and uses their management and relationship skills to reduce tension and create and maintain a calm and safe environment for all students. Handle With Care Training will be Wednesday at 1:30 at GES. This training is for special needs teachers as well as paralegal professionals and any other staff member that, the principal deemed that needs this training. One other, one more update for special education. I'm pleased to announce as of today at 9 o'clock this morning, we are 95% compliance with our special education eligibility.
All right.
Our goal is to be 100%. Right now, we have 2% that are out, that are coming up for eligibility very soon, so congratulations.
Dr. Scott, I think that number is 98.
98, 98.
98%.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Let's get that other 3% up there.
We need those, we need those percents. 98%, sorry about that. So we got, we only have the 2% left. That's, it will be very soon. And so thank you so much, special needs teachers and paralegal professionals.
Absolutely.
Please remember, we do have this workshop scheduled for the 16th, which is a half-day at 1:30 at GES. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Next up is item F, our human resources update.
I'd like to call to the podium Mrs. Riddick for our human resources update. Thank you.
Good evening again in the world of human resources. I'm sorry, y'all. Thank you. We have, still have seven vacancies at GES Special Education with a second-grade teacher and an EL position that's based on the increased population of EL students. At Wyatt Middle School, we have a physical education position on vacant and a Spanish position, which is a new position for Wyatt Middle School. And at Greensville County High School, English and History. So if you know someone who knows someone that's interested in teaching for Greensville County Public Schools, please send them our way. Partnerships, we are happy to announce that we have a partnership between Old Dominion University, and we have placed one student teacher from Old Dominion University at Greensville Elementary through December 6th. So we hope, hopefully, upon the graduation, we'll get her to come onboard and teach. We have also partnered with Brightpoint Community College. We have one placement at Wyatt Middle School who has to complete 20 hours. And then we have one from Walden University in the making, and so hope we'll receive more information on that. We participated in the Southside Regional Job Fair on October 8th. We were happy to see some of our students come through. Ms. Harrison had a group of students there. As you heard, we also participated in the mock interviews, and that was, that went really, really well. Speaking to Ms. Harrison, she said that Chick-fil-A was looking at hiring 30 students, so we hope we get 30 from that room on that day. We participated in the Regional Eight Meetup at Longwood University, talking about the pathways to licensure. And the state has already approved a local license for teachers, giving them an additional year to prep for provisional license. In the world of Frontline, we are excited to have launched our first solution in absence management. We had the opportunity to go to every school and the central office to provide training to all employees, and we have received some really positive feedback from employees for taking the time to actually come in person to do the training. So as we continue to train ourselves, the team traveled to Fredericksburg City Schools where we received training, and we're really excited about the training pieces with Frontline because they're included in our package, so we don't have to pay for the training, the trainer sessions that we get. So right now, we're in the process of training ourselves. We started the HRMS side today with finance and human resources. Our next solution that we'll push out is professional growth. And the week of the 20th, we'll be back in the schools that week, training staff on professional growth. For communications side for human resources, we send out the Monday Monitor every Monday, and in the Monday Monitor, we have been talking about little snippets of Frontline, so employees can know what's coming, what we're working on, and what's to happen next. So every week, we send that out with anything happening in the division for that particular week. And I believe that is all I have. Any questions?
Nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Riddick.
Moving on is our finance update.
I'd like to call Mr. Kaya to the podium, please.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Board, Dr. Edwards, guests. Yes, a quick update. So we recently traveled to Washington, DC for an edenomics training, where they use real-life or real-world, real-school problems to ensure that we're budgeting correctly, that we're not making decisions based on grant funding, because we know that those decisions are going to end eventually, as well as learning about, I don't know if I said budgeting, about budgeting. And because I'm so special, I did get a mentor who will be guiding over or watching over to ensure that we are making those sound decisions as well fiscally. We have our monthly meetings that are scheduled for edenomics. Instead of going over to Washington, DC every single time, if anyone has ever been there, I actually hate it, but I loved it, but I deny it is a lot of traffic. But over there, we will, we will now have virtual meetings as opposed to traveling to Washington, DC. Our auditors will be here in November to help assist with the schools and then come back to the county, so they'll be coming over for us for any additional information they need from the central office. And lastly, I recently participated in the Library Science of Virginia, where our record keeping needed to be updated for finance as a whole, as to when we destroyed payroll files, when do we keep W2s, and just what are the timelines within those that took place in Petersburg, Virginia? And then today, that concluded. And that's all I have. Thank you all. Any questions?
Nothing.
Oh, and Esser is gone. There is no more Esser. Esser is spit down. We want to give a big, big, big shout-out to Dr. Robinson. She is our grants coordinator. She did an amazing job with the schools, ensuring that all of their orders were made. Her and Mrs. Finch, the bookkeepers, principals, and whomever else took place, thank you so much. We were able to give them all $250, and then any instructional lead, $5,000 for supplies. But those things were ordered. We went in, we got all of those things. They are all here. I think some things are still coming, and we just say, "Thank you, Board, for approving it. Thank you, staff, and principals, and everyone else. Thank you, thank you, thank you." And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaya.
All right, next up is the 2025-2026 Division Calendar Draft.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have a picture of the calendar update? Thank you so much, Mr. Riddick. And so one of the things that hearing from our committees, the Superintendent Advisory Committee, and we had our last meeting this month, and one of the things that was, continues to, as a forefront, was let's go ahead and get the next year's calendar out a little earlier. Now, this is not a calendar for approval. This is a calendar that what the committee is working on. And I see members of the Superintendent Advisory Council, Mr. Z, Ms. Mallory, and others here in the room this evening, and want to thank them for their hard work, is when they come to the Superintendent's Advisory Council, they go back to the schools, talk about what was discussed, get concerns, and then we will reconvene. And also, this is an opportunity when we talk about soup scoop, where they get a chance to ask questions, and I will bring the Advisory Council with me as well, and we want to thank them for their work. So one of the things when you look at, when we move to starting before Labor Day, when you move to starting before Labor Day, it is a state law that you must be out the Friday before Labor Day and also the Monday of Labor Day. And when you look at the calendar for the 25-26 school year, just like this year, similar to the first day of school as a proposal, again, this is a draft, will be August the 11th, the holiday, on August the 29th, September the 1st. And when we say the interim ends, that's when we're looking at the parent-teacher conferences night on September the 18th. And when you say the end of the first nine weeks, it'll be October the 14th, which will give us 45 instructional days for the first nine weeks, and report cards will be distributed on October the 24th. Second quarter begins on October the 15th. Professional Development Day on the 15th. No School for Students Professional Development Day, November the 4th is at its election day. That's one of the other things that the council brought forward, we wanted to look at. Early dismissal on the 26th, Thanksgiving break on the 27th and 28th, and the end of the second nine weeks is on December the 19th, giving us 45 instructional days, which means once again, the high school will test prior to the students going home before their holiday begins. And report card distribution is in January, on January the 9th. Christmas break, December the 22nd through January the 2nd. And there's a teacher workday scheduled on January the 5th, and the students return on the 6th. MLK Birthday, interim ends on February the 6th, President's Day, end of the third nine weeks, giving us 45 instructional days. Report card distribution on March the 18th. The fourth quarter begins on March the 12th, holiday on April the 3rd, which is Good Friday, spring break, April the 6th. spring break, April the 6th through the 10th, interim ends on April 22nd. Graduation will be held May 15th and no school for seniors. Early release on May 20th, last day for students is May 21st, giving us 45 instructional days. Last day for teachers, May 22nd, report card distribution, May 29th. And when you look at summer 2026, the holiday begins May 25th and summer learning is June the 1st through June the 30th. And when you look at this calendar, these are the things that the calendar committee looked at, took into consideration. And again, this is a draft. And we will come back to the table when we get the concerns from the first draft that went out, maybe do some adjustments. One of the thing mentioned, um, Dr. Scott brought it to the forefront, forefront, more professional development days as we look at this calendar for our upcoming school year. We hear the concerns, we bring them to light, and this is the first draft. And we'll be working through the calendar with the Advisory Council and the Calendar Committee and be coming back to the Board with updates. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next up is item A, our local policy revisions.
I'd like to call Ms. Riddick to the podium for our local policy revisions, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As a recommendation from the Policy Committee, I am bringing several local policies from the Personnel Section for your review, um, for us to look at, discuss, and revise, um, and then bring back for approval. The policies in your packet would be for personnel leave, staff leave and absences, sick leave, sick leave bank, reporting absences, vacation leave, vacations for 12 months full time, paid holiday, retirement payout, jury duty and subpoena, um, witnesses, family and medical leave, and supplemental early retirement incentive plan.
Any questions? Thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome.
All right, moving along is item J, our cell phone policy update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've been announcing and putting out through communications about the changes that are coming to our cell phone policy here in Greensville County Public Schools. As we know, Executive Order 33 was signed by Governor Youngkin for cell phone free education. Cell phone free education, bail to bail, is the charge that we received from the Governor's Office. We believe we were proactive in Greensville County Public Schools, and we want to thank the Brain Trust that came from Wyatt Middle School, um, as we've implemented yonder pouches. And Mr. Z, Ms. Mallory, were very instrumental, as well as others in that component. When we talk about cell phone free education, now it's not only a Greensville County Public School policy, it is an executive order issued by the Governor, by Governor Youngkin, who is the Governor for the Commonwealth State of Virginia. So what does cell phone free education encompass? It means a student must not use their cell phone while in school. When you break it down into simplistic terms, we had a fireside chat here that was sponsored here at Greensville County High School, sponsored by Governor Youngkin and First Lady Youngkin, where they had a national renowned author present the statistics on mental health as it relates to our teenage students and also as it relates to adults. Virginia is not the only state that is moving forward with cell phone free education. Indiana is another state, as well as several others. California is on the horizon. So cell phone free education is coming to public schools. What is our charge? Our charge is have a fully revised policy by January the 1st. Our charge is to have a fully revised policy by January the 1st, where we implement cell phone free education in Greensville County Public Schools. Um, cell phones, are they in the elementary school? Probably not as much, but they're there. Cell phones in the middle school, cell phones in the high school. So we're preparing our community, preparing our students for cell phone free education in Greensville County Public Schools as backed up by Executive Order 33. And we'll be having other forums moving forward as we move toward the end of this, end of this first, um, semester, leading up to Christmas break, because we will have a cell phone policy for the Board to review to put in place and be implemented when we come back for the second semester.
Thank you. Next up is our Board Member, uh, Committee Reports.
We have a scheduled meeting of the Governor's School on Thursday. We have students who are participating and we'll get an update on the things that they're offering and, um, the possible increase in the number of students who can go from each individual. So I'll give you that report.
Okay. All right, uh, moving on to our action items. The first one is the donation for G E S.
Yes, Mr. Red, Mr. Chair, we had a donation of $300 that was given to us, um, for Greensville Elementary School, and we are seeking approval for the $300 donation to be distributed to Greensville Elementary School.
Did it have any, um, stipulations or anything the money needed to be used for or just open?
It was, it was open, Mr. Chair.
Any questions or comments? All right, what's the Board's pleasure?
Second, the motion.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor making none by saying aye? Aye? Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you for that donation. Are we allowed to know who or is it anonymous?
It's, yes, no, it's not anonymous. Yes, sir.
All right, next up is our dual enrollment contract.
Our dual enrollment contract is, um, in the packet here, is from Southside Virginia Community College for Greensville County Public Schools. And if there are any questions, we'll entertain the questions, and I have Mrs. Harrison here with me.
All right, hearing none, uh, seeking a motion?
I move that we accept the, um, dual enrollment question.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All those in favor making none by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up is the M O U between, uh, the Virginia, with the Virginia Part, Department of Health, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we've received, um, a memorandum of understanding from the Virginia Department of Health, the Crata Health District, where they're going to be giving us defibrillators for Greensville County, uh, Public Schools to be utilized near the sports fields. As you know, there's a major push to make sure the athletes are safe. And with this memorandum of understanding, Greensville County Public Schools will receive two defibrillators that will be stand free. Um, one will be stand free and one will be mounted on the outside at no cost to Greensville County Public Schools. There will be one for the, um, middle school and there will be one for the high school to be located near the football field, um, here at the high school and by the baseball field at Wyatt Middle School. So with this memorandum of understanding, it will pay for the defibrillator as well as the cost of the stand, um, coming from the Virginia Department of Crata Health District.
I move that we accept the memorandum of understanding between Greensville County Schools and the Virginia Department of Health for, that will benefit our students.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Um, I'll add that it's to my knowledge that there is continued talks of potentially getting two more.
That is correct.
Um, that we can bring before the Board at a different time.
Yes, sir.
Yep. All right, um, hearing no other, go ahead. Hearing no other discussion? Um, all those in favor making none by saying aye? Oppose? The ayes have it. That motion carries.
And Mr. Jesse, just as a matter, I wanted to go back to G E S where it was another hundred dollar donation. I see that in my notes here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, which needs another, uh, because it's from a different donor. Um, we received a $100 donation from Popular Mount Baptist Church for Greensville Elementary School to go toward this with supplies. This had a stipulation on it.
All right, seeking a motion, uh, for the additional donation in the amount of $100 to G E S?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All those in favor making none by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. The next one is item D, our 2024-2025 calendar revisions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Chairman, in consultation with the Superintendent Advisory Council with feedback on our 2024 calendar, we have two half a days. Um, the half a days are November the 27th and December the 20th. As we statistically look at, at how we, um, want to advance and move Greensville County Public Schools forward, after talking with the committee, we would like, I am seeking a recommendation to make November the 27th in a synchronous day and December the 20th in a synchronous day, which will not make the day a half a day, but once school is out on November the 26th, students, faculty and staff will be out for Thanksgiving. And on December the 20th, um, on December the 19th, students, faculty and staff will be out for Christmas, making this in a synchronous day. And we want to devote these two days of asynchronous days to basically citizenship as it relates to being an active part in Greensville County Public Schools, um, community.
Any thoughts or comments before we seek a motion? I, I will add that we just, uh, continue to educate not only our staff but our community, um, with the difference of an asynchronous day, like we've done in the past.
Yes, sir.
If something else, seeking a motion? All right, hearing none, uh, we will table this until the next month's Board meeting. Next up is item E, the V S B A policy updates. And these were just updates that we went over in our, um, workshop training, uh, the last time in September. Seeking a motion when you're ready.
Make a motion to accept the G E S.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor making none by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Ms. Reed, more you abstain or you good? Ah, okay, thank you. All right, uh, the motion carries. All right, next up on the agenda is public comments. Um, Clerk, did we have anybody sign up? Okay, is there anybody, um, out that would like to speak? Okay, moving along to any announcements.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so we look at where we are in Greensville County Public Schools. We are at the end of the first nine weeks, and we want to celebrate the hard work of our students and our staff. And thank you to our parents for continuously working on that chronic absenteeism. Also, coming up here in Greensville County High School this Friday is, um, homecoming here in Eagle Land, is homecoming in Greensville County at High, at Greensville County High School. And we've heard from the directors of the various trainings that are forthcoming, and we're looking forward to moving forward at 212 degrees in Greensville County, um, public schools and looking forward to the gentleman, Mr. Katam from Uganda, coming right here to Emporia, which is very impressive that a gentleman from another country will come observe and see what we're doing here to bring unit of justice to Greensville County High School to promote a cultural change. That's the announcements from the floor. Thank you.
And I'll add, just in case somebody, um, was being a little too quiet, a little too shy, and it can't be said enough, I think, uh, one of our biggest announcements is that Greensville County High School is fully accredited.
Absolutely.
So that's our cry, um, is you need to go out in the community and you need to say it in every conversation, whether it's Chick-fil-A on November 12th or wherever else you may go.
And we have banners throughout the community.
All right, um, last item is our closed session, uh, to discuss student matters and personnel. A move that, or I'm looking, seeking a motion to go into closed session to conduct student hearings for students 2024-7, 2024-8, 2024-9, 2024-10, and 2024-11, as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia, as well as, um, to discuss personnel matters to consider or interview prospective, prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board, contained Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
I move that this, uh, school board go into closed session to discuss the issues that were discussed.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor making none by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, we now move to closed session. Thank you guys for staying with us so long.
All right, we're coming back out of closed session of our Monday, October 14th, 2024 school board meeting. Clerk, can you certify?
Board Chair, Ruston Jesse.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Janet Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Ronnie L. Pearson.
Yes.
Ms. Bessie Reed-Moore.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, next is just action resulting from that closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Administration recommends approval of items discussed in closed session.
It's the board's pleasure.
I make a motion that we approve second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor making none by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, if there's nothing else for this evening, um, we'll go ahead and seek a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor making none by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's going to conclude our school board session for Monday, October 14th. Have a good evening.